Everybody, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Fort Bragg City Council. The Fort Bragg City Council meets concurrently as the Fort Bragg Municipal Improvement District Number One and the Fort Bragg Redevelopment Successor Agency. And Councilmember Peters will be leading us in the pledge. Okay, thank you for that. Madam Clerk, if you could take role, please.
Alvin Smith?
Yeah.
Morse Hill Hay?
Here.
Norvell?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Raffinam?
Here.
Okay, we have nothing under Agenda Review. Mayor's Recognition and Announcements, I have just one. I want to congratulate the Fort Bragg High School Girl Softball Team for advancing to the, I believe, Division Four NCS Playoffs. They won the other day, they play again on the 25th in Del Norte. They are the three seed, gonna head up against the number two seed, so we wish them well. Public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone in the room like to speak on non-agenda? Please. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh.
Hi, everyone. My name is Trista McHugh. I'm the Kelp Project Director with the Nature Conservancy. I live here in town. And I just want to come say hi, introduce myself to those I haven't met already, but really, I want to congratulate the city and the Noyo Harbor District, Sherwood Band of Pomo, Mendocino College, West Business Development Center, and Noyo Center for Marine Science for pulling off an awesome Blue Economy Symposium and Learning Festival. It is amazing to see such bright, enthusiastic people enter this city and bring such great creative ideas and have it matched by our own local talent. So, it was just a real pleasure to see that this past weekend. And I think more generally, too, I work in the kelp forest space. I'm a marine ecologist, I'm a scientist, I'm a diver, and what has been going on along our coastline has been tragic, seeing this amount of kelp loss, 96% lost in under a decade, which is an incredible amount of habitat that has been lost and has yet to be restored. And so, we're at the Nature Conservancy, working with local partners to understand what we can possibly do as a community. And the Learning Festival and Symposium was a perfect match. It was great to just have that moment to talk with like-minded individuals and find out what we can do here locally and transcend that knowledge outward, out of our state. So, I think at this point, I just wanted to say again, thank you so much for investing in this novel Blue Economy event. It's not everywhere that this happens, and it was pretty incredible to do it, and I would really like to thank Sarah McCormick and also Anna Newman down at the harbor. So, that is it for me. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? No? Madam Clerk? Ms. Sanchez, please.
I have Marcy Snyder.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say thank you all so much, all of you, the council members and the staff at the city of Fort Bragg. I just get the sense that you care deeply about our economy, about our community, and what's happening to it, and about the future of it. And, just really, thank you. The second thing I want to address is the importance of childcare for city council members while they're at meetings. I addressed this last time, and I know some other people sent in some emails with public comments supporting that concept. We're gonna be looking for new city council people, as some step down, and we have an election up for four members. We will, it would be wonderful to be able to embrace the whole community, people who have families, and for those families to know that they are truly being supported. And childcare is a huge way to do that. It makes it, might make a difference between it happening and not. And then, the third thing I wanted to bring up is, as a member of the Grassroots Institute, we are putting on a forum and event for the upcoming election, where Mendocino County Supervisor Dan Jurday, and he's a former Fort Bragg City Council member, and former mayor Dave Turner, who also sat on the city council, are going to be having a discussion and a question answering with people. And it would be wonderful if people could show up to this forum and engage with these two wonderful and very experienced individuals to find out just what it takes to sit on the city council. And this is going to happen at the CV Star Center, Community Center Multipurpose Room, between 5:00 and 7:00 on Thursday, June 2nd. So, once again, it's at the Star Center, 5:00 to 7:00, Thursday, June 2nd. There will be members of other organizations there. I'm reluctant to exactly say who's gonna show up, because I don't know till they actually do. I think this is going to be a very informative forum discussion that, where people can just have this wonderful interaction with individuals who've done this job, so they know what it's about, and they know what it entails. So, I encourage anybody who has the remotest interest in sitting on the Fort Bragg City Council to attend this event. And, I don't know if people can actually see me, but I'm gonna put this in front of my face. This flyer is around town, and it's in English and in Spanish, so we reach, to reach out to the whole community. And, I just hope people can make it and are interested in doing this incredibly important job. Thank you so much, once again, for everything.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez?
No one else.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to public comment on consent calendar items. Anyone in the room? Mr. Patterson?
Yes, it's Jacob Patterson. I wanna comment on two of the agenda items. One, I'm not so sure about the significant pay increase for our city manager candidates. I know it might be a little difficult to recruit people to move here, but it seems like more money than I would be willing to spend if I were on the city council for that, and would just look for different candidates if nobody wants the job. The other one, I sent in a written comment already, which is about 5F, the letter opposing a state bill. I mean, I oppose it too, but probably for different reasons. I just wanted you all to recognize, since it's on the consent calendar, and the community members who might not have read it, that it's a bill that's supposed to, or it's intended to help facilitate more affordable housing by removing barriers that some people say certain people might abuse, like the sequel process, by not making it discretionary anymore. And, this is the city council taking a position on a pending bill that, on behalf of the community, that I actually think would probably have a division amongst views. And I, personally, I don't think it's the city council's business to take policy directions on state bills, when it's just you guys deciding it, rather than the whole state. But, this is a bill that is removing barriers for affordable housing by allowing them, even if we don't necessarily allow them locally, for where parking lots, office buildings, other things, other types of uses that we've talked about not necessarily even needing here so much anymore, in our commercial zoning districts, or our office professional. And, the draft letter talks about how we really value our public process and our public input, which I find somewhat ironic, but I just would encourage you not necessarily to take a position. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on consent calendar? Okay, public comment on closed session items. Anyone in the room? Ms. Sanchez?
No.
No? Okay. And we will move on to staff comments. Mr. Smart, I believe we have none, is that correct?
Sarah McCormick couldn't be here to make staff comments, and I think she'll leave it up to the council members to comment on the Blue Economy Symposium. I don't have any comments, except to thank her for her very, very hard work, and Crystal and others that have assisted her in that process. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Matters from council? Councilmember Peters?
Okay, well, I'll start off on that and mention that I thought our Blue Economy Symposium was very professional, not just the people who were here, but I think the way that it was organized, the way that it was lined up, the various events, all of them interrelated in some way, the people that were here from out of town, it was just very professional, from top to bottom. I thought there were some very interesting ideas that came about what to do with our local economy. For those that aren't quite sure, when we mention a blue economy, and you've seen posters and you're not really sure what we're talking about, if there are those watching now, or will in the future, basically, the most basic way of putting it is, we have an ocean out here, and it's a great resource that probably has not been fully understood in terms of its economic potential and possibilities. The people that originally settled here used it to fish, but there certainly are a lot of other opportunities, and the harbor itself, I think we can all agree, has been neglected for some time. So, it was great to hear invigorating discussion about what to do in the harbor, invigorating discussion about the future economy not necessarily being in tourism, but perhaps being in utilizing the ocean as a primary economic driving force to create jobs, to create food, the list goes on. So, when you talk about sustaining ourselves here locally, the opportunity we have with the ocean right next to us is something other cities don't, and we need to take advantage of it. So, that was kind of the impetus, I think, moving in, at least from my perspective. And I thought the discussions of a possible aquaculture farm here on the mill site were the most exciting for me, other than the discussions about what to do in the harbor. And the aquaculture is not necessarily finfish, it's shellfish, it's seaweed, it's just, the one that's running in Hawaii is phenomenal, we had people here that were involved in it that I talked to, we had some social events where you could actually network with people. Very interesting possibilities, I think, here, that probably have been talked about remotely, but never really focused on. So, I really enjoyed it, and I'll leave it at that. The Fire Board meets tomorrow night, we're gonna improve our budget. One of the nice things about being in the Fire Board, and I think Bernie has found this out, is they're pretty fiscally responsible there at the Fire Department, and usually our budget is pretty good. We're not having to make cuts. We also have a new fire truck that's finally, I think, gonna be put together and get here, as other things in the supply chain trap. Our Fire Department ordered a new fire truck, when was that, Bernie? A long time, funded it, it's paid for, it's ready to, you know, ordered, and we've been waiting for it. So, anyway, we're getting a report on that, should be here soon. And then, finally, and maybe Tess will touch on this, we did get that email from Kathy Silva about trying to interpret our water bills, and I know others have talked about this in years past, to me, that, you know, you pick up your water bill and you can't really tell what's going on, so maybe our finance department, and maybe we've tried to do this before, I don't know. But, I'll let Tess carry the ball on that further. It just seems like it's a good suggestion to maybe see if we can make it, so the average person can look, see how much water they're using, you know, when they conserve water, how much they're saving, those sort of statistics, if they're readily available and can be put in a form understandable on the bill, it'd be great. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Raffinam?
Thank you. I didn't make it to the Blue Economy Symposium, but I heard it was a great success, Heather did, and others, I mean, sorry, Sarah did a great job facilitating that, I heard that. And then, also, what is the, for Waste Management, for the buyback? Has, what is going on with that? I'm getting a lot of questions. Does anyone know?
Yeah, they, so, they said that they've, they've lost an employee, is why they closed it. But, we did, it is a breach of our franchise agreement, and we did send them a letter, I wanna say, end of last week?
Correct, Mayor. That was end of last week, that Keith Collins prepared a letter for us and sent it directly to the company.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not there in person tonight. Just to tack on to the Blue Economy Symposium, I just, you know, I do wanna clarify, too, that the emphasis on, the concept behind the Blue Economy Industry Hubs is, there's an emphasis on restorative industry and not, not exploitative industry, both, you know, for people and resources. So, these conversations really hinged on this idea of proceeding with healthy ecosystems, kind of underpinning all actions, you know, all, you know, prioritized. And a few, a few of the speakers, it was an incredible event. Again, I have to echo everybody who pulled it together, really just did an outstanding job, particularly Sarah McCormick was a huge driving force behind it, and she really, really created an incredible, an incredible event. We had speakers from all over. We had, we had the chairwoman from the Sherwood Band of Pomo, we had the director of the Blue Economy Program at the Port of San Diego here, speaking. We had a gentleman from the Hawaii Science Center, which is a giant aquaculture facility, speaking. We also, I mean, we had a great panel from our local fisheries down in the harbor, got to hear firsthand perspectives there on everything we were discussing. We had, we had a keynote speech from State Controller Betty Yee. She was here in Fort Bragg, speaking to us here in Town Hall in person, and it was incredible. It was absolutely incredible, and she was talking about this new approach to the economy, one that is not exploitative, that's along this new model that can really work for Fort Bragg. And we also had Congressman Jared Huffman here in person, he also spoke. We had a bunch of folks from different state agencies, we had different companies from all over, we had speakers about conservation aquaculture, commercial aquaculture. I mean, it, we had an entrepreneurship and job force training section, as well as an infrastructure piece, where we got to hear about what it would take to put in the saltwater intake and discharge infrastructure. So, so, I mean, it is so rich, there's so much there, and there were so many people here having in-person discussions who can actually help facilitate this, if it's, if it's the right vision for our community. So, you can see the video, the video, it's all recorded, you can go back and watch it. I found the link on Facebook, on the city's Facebook page, I'm sure it's also on our city webpage, I haven't found it there, though. We'll make sure it's there. And, yeah, so, so, from the, you know, I just wanna emphasize as well that this is kind of the, this is the conversation hitting the ground running, and really, here on out, it's about the community working, partnering together to create this vision, for, you know, really thinking big about how we can help our city. And, yeah, sorry, that's, I'm off my soapbox now, but it was incredible.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Alvin Smith, please.
Thank you. And, of course, I echo all of the things that were said already, it was amazing, I was so impressed. And the organization, from start to finish, was perfect. And I wanna just say a few highlights that were not mentioned. It was great to hear from the fishermen themselves, Fisher people, but...
Tess, you froze.
Okay. We will move on. I just have one comment that I failed to mention earlier, and I just wanna remind the public that this is our last hybrid meeting, starting in June. Meetings will all take place in person going forward. Okay. Brings us to the consent calendar. Did you have anything, Bernie?
Pardon me?
You didn't have anything? Grandpa?
No.
Can we mention that you're now a grandpa?
You can mention it, yes.
Since our last meeting, congratulations to our mayor, he is now a proud grandpa. Clayton Lane Davis, 39 pounds, 21 inches.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Sometimes you're too modest. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And then, thank you for that very much. And then, I believe our city manager has one more thing he'd like to talk about?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Since the council's gonna be approving an agreement for a new city manager in closed session, I need to orally go over the salary schedule for this position. And, under the salary schedule that you're adopting, the new annual-based salary for the position of city manager shall be $195,000. The salary may be increased by amendment to this agreement. The city manager shall be paid at the same intervals and in the same manner as regular city employees, in the event that there are more than 26 pay periods in the calendar year, the periodic payments shall be adjusted accordingly, to that salary shall not exceed any amount approved by the city council. This shall be the approved new salary schedule for the city manager that we'll be voting on tonight in closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Consent calendar, is there anything on consent, someone would like to pull? If not, we will accept the motion to adopt the consent as presented. Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Actually, I would like to pull 5F for discussion.
Okay. Anyone else? I apologize, I can't see both of you. Vice Mayor?
No.
If there's no other, no other objections or anything being pulled, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar as amended, removing item 5F for further discussion.
I second that. I second that.
First by Councilmember Peters, second by Councilmember Raffinin. Madam Clerk, if you could take role, please.
Peters?
Yes.
Raffinin?
Yes.
Mursolhay?
Yes.
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Norville?
Yes. Okay, 5F. Councilmember Alvin Smith?
I just would like someone to explain our position. What is this bill and why are we against it?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you for that excellent question, Alvin Smith. The letter came to us from the League of California Cities. The city managers met on this. We think that the letter as written should not, the letter as written is in opposition to legislation. We don't think the legislation is written as well as it could be. We like to see the legislation revised or opposed. It is, we don't have enough time, because it's going for a vote this Thursday, to revise it. So we must oppose 100% of it. Although we like a lot of the items in there, particularly removal or exclusion for CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, that would help lower the cost for affordable housing. That would help speed up the process in approving affordable housing. It goes too far into the zoning laws and removing office, industrial, retail, and other areas of the zoning ordinance for cities in California. It opens it up, it removes the city council vote. It removes the reason why we have city council members who were elected to vote on such projects. It eliminates the reason for having a planning commission that examines and votes on such projects. And as for that, we feel that this bill just goes entirely too far.
Thank you.
I would just add, too, for anybody that might not know, the League of California Cities, of which we are a partner, one of the things they have is a great legislative lobby group that goes around and understands every piece of state legislation that comes out, examines it, and determines whether or not it affects cities, and then lets the cities know, one way or another. If it doesn't really affect you one way or another, it'll tell you, you can make up your own mind. But oftentimes, then, if there's something that really affects cities in a potentially negative way, they'll let us know and ask us to write a letter of opposition. That's what happened here. And the same thing if there's something they really want us to support. They'll send out an email and ask us to support it. And of course, it has to come to a full council for a vote. It usually ends up on the consent calendar, because it usually is something we typically agree on. That's why we didn't discuss it first, just for general knowledge of the public. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to also just share that at the regional legislative meeting for the League of California Cities, you know, we had a hearty conversation about that kind of impasse where the League of California Cities, it's bottom line, it's looking to protect local control over these kinds of decisions, right? It's about, it's about letting things be localized as opposed to just mandated from above. And we kept finding that the things that we were, that were recommended to us to oppose were kind, you know, the sweeping mandates that had to do with increasing housing stock and dealing with climate change, as well as like some social justice issues, seemed to be at odds with, you know, local control for some reason. So, so, so there is a hearty conversation about what, you know, at least on the regional level at the League of California Cities Legislative Committee, about whether or not we should, as a group, come up with some kind of stand as far as what we would support for climate change measures so that we're not always at odds, you know, but we haven't, there's some work to be done there.
Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Thank you. I guess you need to bring it to public, or do you? I was going to move that we actually accept this.
We do. Councilmember Raffinin, did you have a question? I thought I saw you raise your hand. No?
Oh, no.
No, okay. Madam Clerk, if you could open up 5F to the public, please.
If you'd like to speak on 5F, please come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to speak, and then we'll take our attendees on Zoom if they wish to speak on this matter.
Anyone in the room like to speak on 5F? No? Madam Clerk, Ms. Sanchez, if you would?
If you'd like to speak on 5S, and you are in the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand feature now. I don't have anyone.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring her back to council for either discussion or action.
I'm gonna just pipe in and say, yeah, there were parts of this bill that I liked, and there were lots that I didn't like. So I understand now that we have to, it's all or nothing. And so for that reason, I move that we, unless there's further discussion, I move that we accept 5F.
And I'll second. Okay, I believe it's a governmental knee-jerk reaction to the need for affordable housing, and it's just not appropriate. Madam Clerk, we have a first and a second. If you could take role, please.
Peters?
Yes.
Raffinin?
Yes.
Mursolhay?
Yes.
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Norville?
Yes. Okay, disclosure of ex parte communications on agenda items. We have two public hearings this evening. Anybody have anything they need to disclose? Not seeing any. I did have a conversation with the owner of Sovereign today to get some clarification on definitions. That is it. So we will move to seven, public hearing, seven A. Conduct public hearing, receive report, and consider adoption of city council resolution adopting mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for the raw water line replacement project, City Project 2019-02. And Ms. O'Connor, I believe this is you. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilpersons, for allowing me to present this item to you tonight. It represents the fruition of several years of work, and I'm pleased to be bringing it forward for your consideration. I apologize, I'm going to be a little wordy tonight because it's a public hearing. I want to be sure I get everything clear for everybody.
Please do whatever you need.
This capital improvement project will replace almost two miles...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
But could you please, for the record, make a notice of time?
Open the public hearing? Yeah, that might be a good idea. So at 6:29, we will open the public hearing. Please, Ms. O'Connor, could you restart, please?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this capital improvement project will replace almost two miles of pipeline that has reached the end of its service life. It transports about 50% of the city's water supply to the water treatment plant through a variety of environments. In order to ensure that this project does not have any detrimental environmental impacts, an environmental impact assessment was conducted. The design engineer, Coleman Engineering, hired Sub Consultant Doobury to conduct the initial study, and it was determined that a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, would be appropriate. So the MND Notice of Availability was posted on March 25, 2022. The document was uploaded to the city's website for public review. The notice was published in the Advocate News on March 31 and on April 8, and the documents were uploaded to the State Clearing House on March 28 and circulated for agency comment for the required 30-day period. California Department of Fish and Wildlife and Caltrans were the only reviewing agencies that had comments. Fish and Wildlife made six recommendations, and there were no public comments received during the review period. So we recommend that you hold this public hearing and adopt the resolution to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated negative monitoring plan for the raw water line replacement project. Alternatively, you could deny the adoption and make other recommendations or provide alternative direction. For fiscal impact, the city has been awarded almost $8.8 million for construction of this project. The agreement with the Department of Water Resources requires that all funding be expended by June 30, 2024. In order to meet that goal, the city will need to make every effort to start construction as soon as possible. And adopting this MND will allow the project to move forward with applying for the required construction permits, which you heard about a couple weeks ago. So in terms of the emissions, the ISMND analyzes potential greenhouse gas emissions and the impact of the project on pages 128 through 131. Basically, the project has a less-than-significant impact on GHDs without mitigations required. The document was prepared in accordance with the CEQA requirements, and based on the results of the agency review period, the initial study was adequate to conclude that the project would have a less-than-significant environmental impact with incorporated mitigations. Adopting the MND will allow the project to move forward to meet the goal of ensuring a more reliable and resilient supply of water for the residents. In terms of the timeframes, once the documents have been adopted, the city and/or its consultants will move forward with applying for the required permits. The conservative estimate for obtaining them is about six to nine months. The project is set up so that if the, it can be constructed by segments or its entirety for just in case we need to move some segment forward because a permit is holding up another segment, we are able to do that. So I do have in attendance Krista Redd from Doobury Engineers, who produced the document, and Simon Gray of Coleman Engineering. If anybody has any questions for myself or them, let us know.
Okay, is that it? Wonderful. Thank you very much for that. Does anyone on council have any questions for Ms. O'Connor? A question would be, in the construction process, if you go nine months out, if it takes that long for the permit, that would be, I think, next February, which tends to be a little wet and cold. But would that then delay it even further, construction? Because of, is it, the replacement's a little different than above-ground construction, I would think.
Right. Almost all of this is subsurface, and we do want to construct it during the dry season. We are hoping that we can actually put it out to bid some point while we're waiting for some of the permits to come in. But we need to know what the specific conditions of the permits are in order to properly produce the construction documents. So we want to make sure that we're satisfying all the requirements with our construction documents, but we will be coordinating and planning this as tightly as we can to make sure that this happens.
Right. Dry weather would be better, but...
Oh, yes. And I'm sure some of these are going to require that we do it in dry weather.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Yeah, I thank you for that. What were, can you just briefly describe what the six comments were? And were they, did it change the project?
To me, the six were more recommendations than they were comments. And they were, a lot of it came from a response to the conversation that I actually had with Fish and Wildlife in recommending ways to mitigate. So in terms of specific mitigations, for example, for the Summers Lane project, we said we will plant one tree for every X trees that we take out, or vice versa, and we're going to do it in this location. By not saying that right now, it gives us an opportunity to participate in other options. So our mitigation for the loss of a tree, per se, may be more than just planting a tree like we did at Summers Lane and hoping that it will grow, but we may have an opportunity to be involved in another project somewhere else that might actually restore someplace or preserve someplace that's worthy of preserving. So that's our hope.
You said there were six recommendations, so I'm just curious, are they all about trees or what?
Um, no, but I'd be happy to read them out for you. I did have it, the document.
A summary would be okay.
I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly.
They are in the staff report, don't I think?
Yes, they are. And they're also at the very back of the document.
They are in your report, I believe, in front of you, Councilmember Alvin Smith?
So recommendation one was that we minimize the impacts and reduce, to minimize the impacts on the adjacent Bishop Pine and Cypress Association by minimizing our footprint, by making sure that we don't make the road any wider than we absolutely have to for construction, because part of what makes these trees particularly special, the pygmy trees, is the soil that they're in, so they want to make sure that we're not disrupting any more soil than absolutely necessary. Recommending that we do get the permits that we are proposing to get was one of their recommendations. Then that we do a monitoring plan, which we're doing. And then the last recommendation, that they would like us to be involved in shoulders fog or something equivalent to that as a mitigation measure. Those were their six recommendations.
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, we will open it up to the public, seven B.
Hi, it's Jacob Patterson again, and it's seven A, I think. This kind of aligns with the written comments I already submitted and Tess's questions. I would characterize CDFW's comment as being that, but it also said that we did not have adequate analysis of the impacts to the Cypress trees. That's critical. And if we're trying to not determine what our mitigation measures are now and do it later, we need to have more concrete criteria about what those mitigation measures will need to accomplish, and it doesn't do that. Like, we're not allowed under CEQA to have that level of flexibility without buttoning it down and being able to analyze that it actually will be effective. That's something that's required, and I don't think the city's responses at the end of the appendix do that. If you read them, they say we're not making any changes. Thank you for your thoughts, I guess, kind of, or thank you for your comments, CDFW. But the whole purpose of this was to improve our document, not to say that it's already good. And this is a really good environmental document. I think it's the best one I've seen here. It's thorough, but there's just a couple little areas that I think need some work, and I would encourage you to direct staff to fix them and then approve it at the next meeting. Depending on how you fix them, you might not have to recirculate it at all. But it's important to do things right, and I think that it's mostly right, but there's still a couple small areas, including specifically what CDFW brought up, that need to be fixed before the city can defensively approve it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on seven A? Ms. Sanchez?
No, I don't have anyone.
Okay, it is 6:38, and we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or action. Councilmember Peters? This particular series of projects for our raw water line, we began discussing back in 2014 when former Public Works, it wasn't the director, basically the manager. When Mike Chimalino was elected to city council, he brought this up back then. And it seems like over time, we've been working on it and working on it, and Public Works has had so many major projects coming through. It was nice to see this come actually down to resolution form and move forward to actually start doing this, because it's well overdue. And that's from someone's perspective who actually worked at the Public Works yard and then sat on the council and saw that as a need. So I have no trouble supporting this as it is and hear what others have to say. Okay, I just want to remind council that we have two spots for action tonight. One, we have to approve the resolution, which is number two, but we will take that one first. And then also introduce the ordinance. So two different actions, two different votes. Councilmember Raffinin?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that's on the cannabis one. Seven B, this is seven A still.
I've been on seven B since I got here.
Yeah, no, seven A.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Raffinin?
Okay, the suggestions from Fish and Wildlife, they're not like mandatory that we have to change them, or they're just suggestions. It's not going to land us in another lawsuit or anything.
I'm not qualified to give legal advice, but I don't...
Get us in trouble or shut down the project again.
Do you want somebody else to respond to that question? Maybe somebody from the environmental firm that did the document, or?
From Doobury, they're here.
Yes, they're in the room, so yes.
Krista there? Could you give me the name of your party that's in the room?
Krista Redd.
Just the way the process is set up, we can always be sued, regardless.
Yeah, because it says...
Right or wrong, you can always be sued.
Krista Redd is now in the room.
Hi, did that work?
Yes, thank you. I will have Councilmember Raffinin restate her question for you.
Thank you.
Hi, Krista. So the suggestions from Fish and Wildlife, they're just suggestions. It's not going to get us in trouble, is it, or?
So, no, and I caveat this with, I'm also not a lawyer, so some of it has to, right? However, you know, we will be working with CDFW hand-in-hand as we're getting permits from them. So some of these suggestions are things that we're already working towards. Some of the suggestions, we've already done, and we may have additional conversations with them to see if there's anything more we can do. So that was part of acknowledging their comments and saying, yes, we have thought about this. Yes, we have tried to keep our footprint as narrow as we can as we move forward. move forward with discussions with CDFW during permits, there may be opportunities to make that even smaller, there may not be, you know, those are going to come out, I think, in the permitting process at that point.
Okay, yeah, because you said, um, like, one tree removal, then we're going to plant it somewhere nearby, or does it have to be nearby, or somewhere else?
Right, and I think that was where, you know, our mitigation talks about how, um, what we need to do, it doesn't necessarily identify where, and that's pretty typical, um, as far as mitigation's concerned, because at this point in your process, we don't always know exact, the exact location of where we can plant, replant, but we know that we'll do it. So, sometimes we can, in this case, I know that we've also had discussions, um, regarding the bog and, you know, also revegetating along our project footprint. Um, additional trees may need to go in slightly different areas, but it's okay that we don't say specifically where yet.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed, Redd.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Thank you, Krista, that's great, that was exactly what I was looking for, and I, I think, it sounds like the permitting process will allow us to get, jump in more. You know, a lot of, I was just going to ask if there's possibility of more than one, you know, when we plant trees and people harvest trees, we always require five to one or more, so I would always like to see more than they ask for, just saying that.
Okay. Vice Mayor? I apologize, you're really small on the screen, so I can't see your hand up.
No problem. Um, I don't have anything right now, thank you, sorry. As I just, a disclaimer, I'm really not feeling well, so if I'm a little quiet tonight, please forgive me. Or be happy, enjoy it.
Thank you for being here. Any other discussion? If not, we will accept a, uh, a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and make a motion then that we adopt a resolution of the Fort Bragg City Council adopting mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for the raw water line replacement project, City Project 2019-02.
Second.
Madam Clerk, first by Councilmember Peters, second by Councilmember Raffinin. If you could take role, please.
Peters?
Yes.
Raffinin?
Yes.
Or Solhey?
Yes.
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Norvell?
Yes. Okay, now we can move on to 7B, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Okay, it is 6:45, we will open the public hearing on 7B. Consider introducing by title only ordinance 972, excuse me, 979-2022, amending sections 182230, 182430, 1842055, 1842057, 1842059, and 1810020 of Title 18 in the Land Use and Development Code of the Fort Bragg Municipal Code, and consider adoption of City Council Resolution certifying the initial study negative declaration for ordinance 979-2022. And again, this is where we need action and vote on two items, the first one being the resolution, the second being the ordinance. And we have Ms. Jones here with us this evening, thank you very much for being here, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Bernie, thank you, City Council, for having me back, um, on this important activity for the city. So as you know, um, I was hired in March to kind of steer this process, hopefully to its conclusion, and it started with a planning commission meeting on March 9th, and then on March 23rd, after getting direction from the planning commission, we brought forward a resolution to the City Council, which you considered on March 28th. On April 11th, you start, had opened a public hearing and immediately continued it to this date, um, so that we would have time to complete and circulate the negative declaration for the project. So on page two of my staff report, I, um, highlight all of the various changes to the ordinance, I'm just going to cover them really briefly here, just as a reminder, so that you guys can tick them off in your head. Again, just to remind you that you are going to require a minor use permit for all cannabis cultivation, retail sales, um, throughout the city of Fort Bragg, that you are planning to set a limitation of three businesses total for cannabis retail in the central business district, that you're looking to set various operational requirements around cannabis retail, including adding regulations regarding odor, hours, screening, onsite consumption, and drive-through services, that you're looking to limit locations where cannabis can be, um, cannabis businesses can exist, to not allow them within 150 feet of a youth center, school, and/or daycare facility, that you're, you've defined standards for accessory cannabis use, and required a minor use permit if they're added after the fact to a cannabis business, that you've set accessory uses for cannabis to individually not exceed the total square footage of the primary use, that you're allowing the following as accessory uses in the central business district, highway-serving, commercial and general commercial districts, namely office, nursery without flowering, cultivation for on-sale site only, retail delivery, craft cannabis manufacturing, distribution, wholesale, and onsite distribution, that fire suppression sprinklers will be required in all buildings in the commercial districts where there is cultivation, that all nursery cultivation will comply with the regulations regarding commercial cannabis cultivation. The definitions section also includes new definitions for cannabis accessory uses and cannabis manufacturing. Through the net negative declaration process, I identified two additional, um, regulations that needed to be added to ensure that we could have a negative declaration instead of a mitigated negative declaration, and that was essentially to require language that, um, would require a, uh, an interaction with the city's wastewater treatment facility operators to ensure that any fertilizers, insecticides, and fungicides that are used in the cannabis cultivation process do not negatively infect the wastewater treatment facility, and then also adding language to ensure that for mixed light cultivation, that light from the cannabis facility doesn't, um, go into the night sky, um, as a consequence of having that mixed light use, and so it requires, uh, some sort of shade to be closed at nighttime. So we circulated and prepared the negative declaration starting on April 22nd, the circulation period ended on May 12th. We did receive a couple of comments from one individual that expressed some general concerns about the ordinance, and I've sort of summarized them very briefly here. Uh, one is an objection to the use of wholesale and distribution as, um, accessory uses in the commercial districts, and the other comment is a general critique of the, um, negative declaration, and some concerns that it does not provide sufficient analysis, and I'll cover both of those briefly here afterwards. So the issue of wholesale and distribution, um, this actually happened in a funny part of the city council meeting, when you had directed me to put, um, craft manufacturing within CBD, um, highway, commercial, and general commercial, and I just automatically just figured, well, if you're doing craft manufacturing, we might as well put distribution and wholesale in there too, so if you didn't want it, it's very easy to take out. If you do want it, I just included in my staff report a general definition of it, what is an accessory use, what do we mean by wholesale and distribution, and what is craft manufacturing? Um, in looking at our current zoning ordinance, identified three other uses that are currently allowed in the retail and commercial districts, um, that have some aspect to them that could be considered, uh, wholesaling or distribution as an accessory use, and those would include printing and publishing, laboratory analytical and testing, and crop production, horticulture, orchard, and vineyard, in that these types of uses also probably sell to businesses, not just to retailers, and probably also send stuff out rather than just selling from onsite, so they might have sort of an, as an accessory use, a distribution or wholesaling aspect. So while it's not common, it's not completely absent from this type of use in the zoning ordinance. So, I'll leave it up to you to decide whether you want to keep it or not keep it, because those are always your decisions. It's also important to note that craft manufacturing as an accessory use to retail may not necessarily need wholesaling and distribution as an accessory use. It may, kind of a judgment call. And with regard to the concerns about whether the SEQA document is complete, the main issues that the app, that the complaintant brought up was whether or not thresholds of significance were defined, whether all reasonably foreseeable indirect impacts were analyzed, and whether cumulative impacts were analyzed. I just want to step back from that question, because the bigger issue here is this ordinance doesn't sit by itself on a shelf, it's surrounded by three other books, um, ordinance, the general plan, the zoning ordinance, and the municipal, municipal code. And, um, the point is, when you look at SEQA, you want to look at this ordinance in context with all of those other ordinances, which is what I tried to do in the negative declaration. So, where there's an issue around water, for example, we looked at all of the other requirements that someone would need to get a permit, would need to comply with around the issue of water. And in the staff report, I went into great detail about that, just to pick off a few of the easy ones, and I'm sure Diane will correct me if I missed anything, because I know this is high priority for you, is you have to first get a will serve letter from the utility district. In other words, the utility district has to make sure that they have the water to serve the proposed use, that would be part of the minor use permit. The applicant is also required to submit a water usage plan to, to the municipal services district, saying how much water they would use, the ordinance itself preferences alternative water sources than the city's water potable system. So, and then there's more stuff in the staff report, I don't want to go into it all and bore you, because I'm sure you read it. So, long story short, I do feel that the mitigated negative declaration is self, I'm sorry, the negative declaration is self-mitigating, that it references all the regulations that anybody would need to comply with. Further, it's, um, very, it's not really good form to go out and sort of suppose where the project might happen in the future and try and analyze that, because you don't really know, like, even in the case of water, five years from now, there may be a D cell plant here, so the water situation itself is fluid and could change, and you can't analyze a project that you don't have in front of you. And, um, so I would respectfully disagree with the comments from the, um, person who sent in comments on the SEQA document. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go into it in more detail, but I don't want to bore you unnecessarily. So in conclusion, the recommended action tonight is to introduce by title only the ordinance and to adopt a resolution adopting the negative declaration, both are as part of your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions that are still in your minds.
Wonderful, thank you for that very much. Any questions here to ask? No?
Yes.
Please, Councilmember Raffinin, please.
Okay, thank you, Marie, for doing this, but, okay, you had, you sent your school and daycares, there's no residential setbacks.
Yeah, so you guys did talk about that at length at, um, both meetings, I think, and at the end of that, um, the majority of the council didn't agree that there should be a setback from residential.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Thanks, Marie, um, there's a lot of, uh, questions that got answered tonight, so thank you very much for anticipating them. Also, um, can you just briefly describe the main differences between what the planning commission adopted and what we're about to adopt tonight?
Yes, I can try to, but, um, please bear in mind Tess, that we're doing this from my memory, which is not perfect, because this is back in April now, it's three months ago. But, um, going through the list, so they agreed with, um, your guys' direction around the use permit, they agreed with your guys' direction around the three, um, the limitation of three businesses in the central business district. I would say the major differences are that they did have a location limitation on, um, where cannabis cultiv, cannabis retail should be allowed, and they wanted to limit it to the west side of Franklin Street, um, going through the commercial districts. They also had a limitation, um, for churches, so 150 feet from churches was also something that they wanted to have in here that you guys decided as a group not to include. The accessory use situation was a little bit different in that they were categorized by districts instead of all being grouped together. They did not consider those fire sprinkler issue, that was added. I'm sure I'm forgetting something.
Wasn't there a cumulative square footage?
Uh, right, yeah, cumulative square footage for accessory uses, so they had wanted to, um, consider all accessory uses together and make all of them together be less than the primary use, and, um, City Council provided direction that you wanted to have each accessory use individually be less than the retail use as a whole, but overall, maybe the accessory uses could be more than the retail use, so that, that was also a change. And then finally, the definition for cannabis manufacturing was refined, craft cannabis manufacturing was refined quite a bit, um, through the process. I think that's everything.
Councilmember Alvin Smith, does that answer your question?
Thank you for refreshing my memory, it's been a while, and, um, I still have issues with some of those, but we should go on.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll open up 7B to the public. Madam Clerk, if there's anyone in the room?
Hi, it's Jacob Patterson, um, I'm glad you mentioned that you have two separate actions. One of the things that I didn't bring up in any written comments, but I think it's just a best practice for these ordinances, is that you should actually have separate resolutions even for the SEQA document, that should be, uh, done first, and then followed up with the ordinance, um, and in your guys' case, part of the reason why you want to do that is when you have a combined, um, action, you are having to agree with both parts of it, it's kind of like that, uh, legislative policy you took earlier. Some of you might be fine with the ordinance policy direction, but have some issues with the SEQA document or vice versa, and I just think it's, it's a better practice to do it that way. I'm not going to bore you with any more, uh, comments other than I just encourage you to remove those two words from the accessory, uh, use, because I think they do cause issues. Our ordinances do not address the aspect, the potential aspects of those other businesses Marie mentioned, like publishing, um, is having, specifically allowing these other types of off-site developments, so I, I don't think they're analogous, but that's just my opinion, and I also don't remember it being your direction, which is my main point in the comment, thank you.
Yeah, one question, if you will?
Sure.
You said remove two words, and I didn't get which two.
Oh, the two words were in the definition, I wrote this in the comments, from the definition of what the permissible, which doesn't mean they're necessarily going to be allowed on the project, but, um, it's the last two, it's wholesale and distribution, from the accessory uses. I think those belong as part of the future project that Marie mentioned before, um, if you wanted to do the micro-business thing, that would require some amendments to our general plan to be paired with it, that's all, it's just a procedural thing about the order you do things. Ultimately, the policy decision is up to you, you guys can of course make those policy changes, I just think you need to do it in a way that recognizes our general plan, basically puts wholesale and distribution type, industrial type uses in our industrial districts and not in our commercial districts, that's all, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the room like to comment on 7B? No? Ms. Sanchez?
I have two comments, um, Brandi Molten?
Good evening, can you hear me? Perfect. Um, I just wanted to make a comment about wholesale distribution as an accessory use. Um, I think in this city specifically, uh, the population may not support, um, just having other accessory uses facility, uh, service the retail onsite only, um, it really does need to be, uh, a use that's allowed to service other locations, whether that's locally or outside of the city limits, the county, you know, Northern California, et cetera. And if the goal is to facilitate a successful business, then, you know, it seems like that would be something that you all would want to include in the ordinance. Secondly, the definition of craft manufacturing, I think, is too specific, especially since, you know, none of us are really experts here, I'm only an expert in the stuff that I do, but it seems like it would be inhibiting for, or prohibitive... And I think that if the city wanted to align with this.
Ms. Molten, we lost you after a line. Ms. Sanchez, perhaps we can come back to her. You had another commenter.
Yes, Shelley Green.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't followed the process that brought us to this point, but I don't understand why we are promoting cannabis and why the county as a whole is promoting cannabis tourism here. We have the most tourism we've had ever in the past year, even though everybody was under lockdown, and people come here because we are a nature destination. I think we have everything we need to promote environmental education, tourism here. I think that the Blue Economy Symposium confirmed that. There's a lot of enthusiasm about all of this. It already draws millions of people to our county. And I don't see that this is necessary or beneficial. Cannabis doesn't even grow here. It's a dry-weather plant. I think it will use more water. We're in the midst of climate change. That's not going to change immediately. We've had the least water in our reservoirs in Mendocino and Sonoma County that we've ever had. Cannabis does use chemicals. They are going to have to be processing both the chemicals and the water through the water It's not a good mix for who we already are, and it's not necessary, and I don't think it is financially advantageous. Criteria that were mentioned were public interest. I don't think it's in the public interest of our economy. As far as health, I don't think it's a pastime that promotes health, and I won't go into that because I don't have time. But I see it behind the scenes all around us. I don't think it's safe. I'm seeing people that are high walking across the street in the middle of the highway. And these people that come here, and I've heard they're not going to smoke here. I don't buy it. They come here, if it's tourism, to get high by whatever means, and then they drive back over that road. The chemicals stay in your body, in your brain, for three days. As far as convenience, we've got a lot of items on here that discuss how to make it more convenient to do that. And overall, for the welfare of the city, I do not think promoting cannabis in our city is in benefit financially or experientially for the people that live here or the tourists that come and support our economy. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
I realize, I realize also that cities and counties do, under state law, have the option to limit and also prohibit cannabis businesses within their city. And I think we should give that some long and hard thought before we go down a road that we can't come back.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Your three minutes is up. I appreciate your comment. Ms. Sanchez, is Ms. Molten back on, or do we have anyone else?
Brandy Molten, you have another minute and a half.
Hi, can you hear me all right now?
Yes.
All right. I'm suffering with satellite internet tonight. I'm not sure where I cut off, but I just wanted to say that, you know, for simplicity and to, you know, accomplish the goal of what the council has discussed, aligning the manufacturing definition with the state does exactly, the intent to have nonvolatile, it would do exactly that to align with the state. And then I did just want to point out that a bill being introduced at the state right now is proposing to eliminate local control because of the barriers that local jurisdictions are putting on local businesses. And, you know, Fort Bragg being a town of 6,000-ish, we are the last one in this jurisdiction. Point Arena has a successful cannabis ordinance. Willetts does. Yukaya, the county of Mendocino does. They all have cultivation. They all have micro businesses. So, you know, those of us that have been waiting and want to contribute tax revenue and to the tourism industry, we're still waiting, and we're still here, and we, you know, we're looking forward to getting, getting this moving, one way or another. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Sanchez, do you have anyone else?
No one else.
Okay. It is 7:08, and we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or action. Anybody chomping to go first here? Councilmember Alvin Smith, please.
Just for the record, so those 200 signatures on a petition from a neighborhood on the east, on the backside of the east, on McPherson, which is on the backside of Franklin. So in the future, that sort of thing, just, we just ignore that, and we just go ahead and approve dispensaries as long as it's less than three in the CBD. Is that where we're going with this?
So is that a question for me? Just my clarification.
Yes, Marie.
Okay. So just to be clear, a minor use permit is a use permit process where you look at whether or not a use is compatible with neighboring uses. And so as part of that process, you would allow for public comment, obviously. The planning commission would listen to that public comment, and they could take it into consideration when they provide direction to staff, whether or not the use permit should be approved or not. So I think it's pretty clear that the planning commission, it's under their purview to decide that significant neighborhood opposition would be, could be a reason for denial of a permit. And that's always the way use permits function.
Well, that's encouraging, except that we, we have voted on it twice, and we had a stalemate, basically, because there are only two and two city council were voting. So I'm wondering if this comes up again in the exact same neighborhood, in the exact same situation, and the planning commission denies it again, you know, do we still have anything to say, or are we supposed to approve it because it's within the guidelines that we just adopt?
So it would go through the same appeal process. So a minor use permit, if there is one person that's opposed to a project that's under review for a minor use permit, they can ask for it to be taken to the planning commission. So that happens without any fine or fee or payment by that applicant. So the planning commission would then hear it. If a decision was made that, that the community didn't like, they could appeal it to the city council. Also, city council members themselves can appeal a planning commission decision. I think you just need two members of the city council to appeal something to the city council. I'm not 100% certain of that, because I haven't looked at it in a while, but I could look at that at a break if you want me to give you feedback on that. And then again, it would be up to the city council to make the decision. There is no appeal authority after the city council makes a decision, other than the courts.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, please.
I just want to say, I think, Marie, thank you for that clarification. I think we've put the mechanisms in place to, to allow, to enable public feedback and adjustment to individual projects. And it's, and we're talking about broader ordinance. I don't think it's appropriate to focus on a specific project in the past, as we're discussing this, the broader strokes here. The mechanisms are in place to go case by case.
Agree with that. Thank you for that comment. Anyone else here? Councilmember Peters?
Well, this is certainly one of the issues, I think, that we have belabored over time, back and forth, the city council and the planning commission. And I think we, both of us, the planning commission and the city council, have done what we thought was the best in the interest of the city and the business community to come up with a cannabis ordinance locally. We've limited to three in the central business district. We've addressed all the concerns, I think, that the people had as best we could. There are some folks that want us to refine this even further. But I think, I want to commend staff, and particularly you, Marie, for the work you've done on this, and your presence here tonight to calmly explain some of the reasons behind what we've done. I support what we've got before us here tonight. I know it takes two actions, and when we get to actually acting on the, the two matters here before us on this agenda item, I'm ready to support both of them.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Raffinin.
You did a good job, Marie, on this. It's long coming, but the residential, I know, I got, oh, a majority of the councils already decided not to put it in there, but I don't, I don't know. I don't feel this is a great, great job, but I don't know. I don't feel comfortable with not having residential setbacks with it after everything. I feel our town needs to be more educated on cannabis. This is a great report, but, you know, like I said, I don't feel comfortable with the regi-, the non-residential setback here. It's a good report. Thank you. And are we voting on keeping wholesale and distribution or just leaving it?
It is in there, correct? As an accessory to retail?
The way it's written right now, it is in there. You can take it out, you can leave it in. I don't think it has a significant SEQA impact either way. I will make one correction. The, you're not adopting the resolution tonight, you're just introducing it, I mean, the ordinance. And the ordinance will actually be adopted in 30 days. So that's why there's only one resolution. And to be fair to Jacob, you actually should adopt the resolution for the SEQA document first.
Okay. For me, I think, there's just one thing I'd like to see us address a little bit more under craft manufacturing. I do struggle with the limitations that are in there. There are other devices that they do use that aren't mentioned in there. I'd like to see us add. The washing machine, I was not aware that that's actually what they call it in the industry. So I appreciate that being in there. Also, a, a dry sifter, or which is, you know, really like a vibrating screen, pretty innocuous again. And then also, I would like to add in the rosin press, which is just two, two heating elements, I believe, or heating plates that where they press the flour and they produce the rosin. I've seen them in action, and they're even more innocuous than a vibrating sifter. So I'd like to see those two tools added into the craft manufacturing. Besides that, you know, to address some of Councilmember Alvin Smith's concerns about the 200 signatures, I don't think there's 200 people that live on that block. I do know a lot of the people that signed that, and some of them don't live in the area, although I do appreciate their comments. I'd like to see the wholesale distribution stay in there. And, you know, I think we did, I was fairly comfortable with the original ordinance that we had. It didn't work. We got to a place where planning commission denied an application, and then as Councilmember Alvin Smith said, we got to a 2-2, which basically put it back to what planning commission decided. So that's why we're back here, to try and get a workable ordinance where people that want to come into the city and do these kind of businesses, they can. Again, with the minor use, as Ms. Jones explained, the process is there. The public is going to have their opportunity. I think this, to also touch on what the Vice Mayor said, to speculate about a specific project, I think is inappropriate. We don't have a project in front of us to ask the council to speculate on whether or not we're going to end up in a 2-2 tie, or how we're going to vote on something that comes from in front of us, without something actually in front of us, I think, again, is inappropriate. You know, it could get us a lot, in a lot of trouble if we were all to sit up here and answer your question about how we're going to vote. We could all be asked to recuse later for being biased, already having made up our mind. And I would also say, yes, when these kind of things, appeals come to council, regardless of how you voted on the ordinance, you are expected to uphold city policy, regardless of how you feel about it, your personal opinions. We don't necessarily get those while we're up here, whether we like it or not. So that's how I feel about it. I think it's important that we get this adopted and move along. Hopefully, somebody will come in and file an application and get started. I know we've got people in the community that want to get this done and are waiting on us. The county seems to be a bit of a mess. I felt like in the beginning, when we started this, that we could get ahead of the county because they were a mess, and get these people in here, but, you know, maybe finally we can get that done and just be more attractive than the county and get these people in here and get them working. So I'm also willing to support this as it is.
If there's no more discussion, I'll try floating a motion here for the resolution. I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the Fort Bragg Planning Commission recommending city council approve ordinance 9792022, amending the inland land use and development code to regulate commercial cannabis cultivation and amend regulations for cannabis retail in commercial zones.
So just to correct you, that was a resolution from the planning commission that was...
I'm sorry. I got the wrong one. That's why I don't like these stupid iPads when we do these meetings.
I'm sorry to jump in.
I want to do the next one down. Here we go.
The negative declaration.
There it is. Attachment number five. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, before, before we proceed, could, could those of us on Zoom have a quick chance to?
Oh, sure.
Comment? I know it's difficult. Alvin Smith had her hand up first, and then I'd love to add something, please.
Yeah. Councilmember Alvin Smith, please.
Thank you for being braver than me. I want to take great exception to what the mayor said about personal opinion versus what the law says. And I, that is specifically why I asked Marie the question, would we be allowed to overturn or not overturn the planning commission's direction, which says it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, so we're not approving it? It seems like the mayor would say, well, the law says that it can be in the neighborhood, so therefore we must approve it. And, and so that's my question for Marie. Can we, can we go along with the planning commission's decision if the law says you can have a, you know, cannabis ord-, you know, a dispensary behind someone's home according to our new rule that we're, we would adopt tonight, yet it doesn't fit in the neighborhood? Are we allowed to do that without breaking the law?
Hi, Tess. I appreciate that question. And it's kind of ironic, because I had just shut down my computer. So I'm going to have to do this from memory, because I don't have the use permit requirements right in front of me. But one of the use, use permit requirements is that you have to find that the use is consistent with the other uses in the neighborhood and will not cause issues around, and there's a long list, public safety, noise, blah, 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 blah. So that gives a majority of the city council or the planning commission an interpretation opportunity around a use permit applic- an interpretation opportunity around a use permit application for a project that might be controversial in some way. So the answer to your question is, you know, to put it super bluntly, like a discretionary permit is called a discretionary permit for a reason. A use permit is a discretionary permit. It's at the discretion of the city council, at the discretion of the planning commission. Yes, you have to support any kind of denial with findings of fact. But typically, in almost any application, you can find some finding of fact for denial if you look hard enough. I mean, I hate to be like super blunt, but that is just the reality in planning law because, you know, an ordinance, our ordinance even is, you know, super long and involved, and almost nobody can be perfect on every single point in it. So, yeah, I think you would have an opportunity, especially given the findings that are required for a use permit to make a denial. You would need to have a majority of the city council to do that, and you would need to have a good finding of fact as to why you're making that denial. So it can't be arbitrary. I don't know if that gives you enough comfort level, but it is, it is a little squishy. There's not an on and off switch on this, yeah?
It does, but, you know, I don't want to talk about the past, but I took a lot of heat for breaking the law because we had a, an ordinance that allowed the use. And so therefore, you know, I was going against the rules. And so I just wanted to know if I had any leeway here without getting in trouble. So thank you.
Vice Mayor, please.
May I have, I have to say that, you know, I think, I think a key word there was arbitrary. You know, there's an obligation to support your decision with factual findings and make it clear that it's not an arbitrary decision. So as long as that's being done, then you have a leg to stand on, right? I just wanted to say that I do support proceeding here, and I would like to see the language that the mayor asked for added on to the craft manufacturing. I think that's a rational request, and I'd like to see that happen. And that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Peters?
Yeah, I support adding that language as well if we want to weigh in on that before we introduce a resolution.
So just for clarity on craft cannabis manufacturing, you want to have it read as small-scale, small-batch manufacturing by hand with or without aid of small tools that may typically be found in other typical commercial businesses, including washing machines, blenders, cooking equipment, nursery tools, vibrating filter, and rosin press, et cetera. I will note that et cetera is already there.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure you need to get super detailed about what you're adding in there because et cetera gives the planning commission and the city council leeway to determine whether or not this qualifies as craft cannabis manufacturing.
Can we add those two and keep in et cetera?
You can, you're boss. You can do whatever you want.
Thank you.
The more fine-tuned you make it, the more limiting it actually becomes. So I always like an et cetera.
I would agree with that. And I think if we want to limit it, I would, my recommendation, I don't think this would fly, would just be to state it as non-volatile. You don't need to go there. I'm comfortable with it as is.
There is actually another sentence in the definition in which it says craft cannabis manufacturing does not include volatile chemicals.
Right, right. But my, my suggestion would be to take out all the language and just call it non-volatile. And then it covers everything. But again, I don't want to, I don't need to go there. I'm comfortable with it as it is and amended. Councilmember Alvin Smith, do you have any concerns about the added language?
None at all.
Vice Mayor, same question?
I don't, and I'm, I'm comfortable either going to just the simple non-volatile or the specifications with keeping the et cetera at the end. Either way, it's helpful to me.
Less is more for me.
Marie, is there any reason with Tess's concern of less being more that we just can't call it non-volatile manufacturing?
Well, I think you could run into a risk here of exciting a certain member of the public, which you may or may not want to do around legalizing manufacturing without having limits on it. I think the way it's written now, small-scale, small-batch manufacturing by hand with or without the aid of small tools, that's the way it was originally written. And then you added the list that may typically be found in a typical commercial business, including blah, 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 and blah, blah, blah.
Et cetera.
Et cetera. I didn't want to read all those words out again.
Okay. Vice Mayor, how do you feel about that?
I'm fine with keeping it more specific if it seems to cover us better.
Councilmember Alvin Smith?
Yeah, either way, it's still, could we eliminate all the such-as's? It doesn't matter to me, really. I mean, to make this go faster, you know, do what you need to do. It's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Peters, would you like to reiterate your motion or restate your motion?
First of all, apologize to our Zoom attendees. I wasn't trying to rush this through in any way. I didn't realize we had more discussions, so my apologies. I know how difficult it is to run a meeting in Zoom and be a Zoom guest, too.
We can't have discussion on the motion as well.
Sure. Okay, so now I think I've got the right one here. We'll make a motion to adopt resolution of the Fort Bragg City Council adopting a negative declaration for ordinance 979-2022, amending section 18.22.30, 18.24.30, 18.42.055, 18.42.057, 18.42.059, and 18.100.020 of the Title 18 inland land use and development code of the Fort Bragg municipal code. Yes, I did have a career in radio. Thank you.
Madam Clark, are we correct there? Are you comfortable with that reading?
I am. That one was okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. And Vice Mayor, do you have a question, or do you like pre-training?
I was just offering the second, but you did. That's okay.
Okay, is there, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? No, saying no. Madam Clark, if you could take role, please.
Peters?
Yes.
Raffanen?
No.
Morsel Hay?
Yes.
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
And Norville?
Yes. Okay, four to one. And then the ordinance.
Mr. Peters? Anybody else want to do that, or do you want me to? I want to see, there's two ordinances in the attachments here. Make sure I got the right one.
They're essentially the same. One is just track changes. I would recommend that as you make the motion to introduce the ordinance, that you say as amended vis-à-vis vibrating sifter and rosin press in the definition.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance, Fort Bragg City Council, an ordinance amending sections 18.22.030, 18.24.030, 18.42.055, 18.42.057, 18.42.059, and 18.100.020 of the Title 18 inland land use and development code of the Fort Bragg municipal code. Ordinance number 979-2022 as amended.
Okay, thank you for that. First, my Councilmember Peters, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clark, if you could take role, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I ask for a clarification on the amendment, please? Because I heard blah, blah, blah over here by Ms. Jones. But I just want to clarify, is it adding washing machine, dry sifter, vibrating screen, rosin press to the craft manufacturing?
Washing machine was already in there.
It was in there, okay. So just starting with the dry sifter, vibrating screen, and rosin press?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to put that lineage in there. I'm sorry to delay. I want to make sure the minutes are correct.
No, very much appreciated. Thank you.
All right.
So we have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? No. Okay, Madam Clark, if you could take role, please.
Yes. Peters?
Yes.
Raffanen?
No.
Morsel Hay?
Yes.
Alvin Smith?
Yes.
Norville?
Yes. Okay, it brings us to the end of conduct of business. It is 7:32. We will recess this portion of the meeting and reconvene and to close at 7:35.